Um, let's get going. The ordinance is forty-nine. Their video is definitely going in some magnitude.
So you play the music here?
It's probably lots of one.
Alright, this is a tip. The first three are tips. So, do you want to talk about these with your bears?
Just a continuance of our tip program for three new buildings that are going up. Two of them definitely are out of the ground. The third one will be shortly. Talked to...
Who called me? You called me about car wash, right?
Yes, yes. Uh, 'cause they're gonna break ground shortly, so. Just continuation and use, you know, more funds towards their road improvements.
I had a question about wave car wash, just because Valley View is included, the entirety of Valley View. How does that get calculated?
It's just a list on the infrastructure roads that are eligible. We might not ever spend money on that.
But I mean, it's not, I thought it was roads that were close to the tip, to the area.
If there's a direct benefit to the parcel being tipped, you can utilize those funds for public infrastructure improvements.
So since it's a major road in the city, that's a...
Like if somebody was going from City Hall to the car wash, they might use Valley View to get there.
Gotcha. But it's a major road and it's...
Is this built right by KFC?
And Keene.
Ohio Auto Improvement?
No, Keene and, between Keene and KFC, yeah.
On the same plot as KFC.
Yeah, it's just closer. Just what we need. That'll make car wash number three or four.
None of our business. And they want to make money doing it? They can make money doing that.
Well, I have a question. It's the same question for all three.
Okay.
These all three have been presented to the schools.
They will be sent tomorrow morning.
Do they have a say in it?
We're keeping them whole, so that's all I'm...
They'll get their money.
Yeah, they get their money as if this does not exist at all. It's actually in one of the sections.
So they give whatever the taxes are right now, but they won't get the addition until thirty years from now?
No, no, no. They're kept whole, as if this does not even exist.
The taxes received by school district is in full course of the third year for the tip for any of the three parcels.
So when the buildings are done and they're open, increase in property tax will go to them?
Yes, correct.
It's largely funds that the county would have received, will be going into the...
At the end, at the end of section two, which is on the backside of the... It says, "Service payments shall be paid to Nogoni Hill City School District, Nkaga Valley Career Center, and the amount of taxes that would have been payable to, as applicable, if improvements had not been exempted from taxation."
Okay, then my other question, which only applies to the Optima.
Okay.
Is that part of the JED?
No.
It's only in Macedonia?
It's in Macedonia. Well, the land is in Macedonia, so we have to...
So which part is part of the JED? Is Target and Giant Eagle?
No, it's, uh, everything west of Chick-fil-A.
Huntington Bank is very...
So that includes Canara Bread?
Canara Bread is in Northfield, yeah.
It's, um, it's actually attached as exhibit eight to the resolution and assessment, the real assessment.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about the JED.
Where, where does it end, Westmont? Where does the JED end, Westmont, or it doesn't?
I can't tell you. It's Giant Eagle.
Canara's in the JED, Chick-fil-A is in Macedonia, Lowe's is in the JED, Culver, Optima are in Macedonia.
There's no condonance in Jiffy Lube in the JED or Northfield.
That was, that was my...
That's a funny question.
Yeah, I thought you meant...
No, the West End.
West End. Uh, no, those parcels did not go into the JED, I don't believe, right Mark? That never occurred.
They have not, but there is interest in joining the JED. So there's talks about that now. Thank you.
The West Side includes Giant Eagle, Target, yep, and the Noon To Restaurant.
Right.
And Panda Express. Panda Express that's going up right now is also in the JED, yes.
So any further questions on these tips? And is everyone alright with going one, two, three on these?
No, 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 just one.
One?
Because I think it's the school.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a way that we have dollars projected that were foregoing, receiving them for thirty years?
I have not projected any of them.
If we get that projection.
What do you mean by foregoing this?
The tip means they don't have to give us that for thirty years.
No, it means we, the county would normally get those funds, now they come to us for the improvements. So there's money that we would not normally have gotten.
We're getting extra money.
So when the county auditor collects the funds for the increased value from the non-approved value to the approved value, the portion that would go and get deposited, the county's bank accounts will get deposited to a separate account, and those funds are then due out to the city or pursuant to the tip agreement, if there is one.
So the county is basically giving up their money?
Yes.
And do they, are they aware of all these?
Yeah, then we have to file one.
And you want one?
Just one, yes.
Just one, so I could send out the letters with the copies of these ordinances to the two schools.
It's never happened before, but what if it happens that the schools are, are in agreement? We've never had that happen with all the tips we've passed.
I'm not sure about the schools. Wouldn't be in agreement if they're...
It doesn't affect them.
Or they're notified, but so do they have a right?
We probably have a discussion, sit down and have a discussion with them about their projections.
It never said no. So it wouldn't surprise me, but three of them coming out once, that's a lot.
The next three are for the senior...
Just real quick, I do, I do bold in my letter that they will receive property taxes the same as if these do not exist. I bold that in each letter to the school district.
And do you include that they get the same taxes once the property value goes up when the buildings are built?
Yeah, it's like this doesn't even exist.
I just wanted to make sure because they're going out for...
Yeah, no, I get it.
They're going out on the ballot.
Yeah.
Definitely not being my...
I'll make it clear.
Yeah. Alright, the next three are for the senior services. Any questions on those? Anyone want to talk on those? Or they pretty much, you know, we were all here for last year's agreements and the year before.
It's been around forever.
Yeah, it's a great program.
One and a one. There was one pusher for it. There's no long, very quick pusher.
Right. Um, so I'd like to do one, two, three on these so we can start getting people signed up and getting ready to go for leaf seizing, if that's alright with everyone?
The requirements haven't changed from what I can see.
Right. Alright, fifty-five is for the activity room floor at the rec center, which is really just a continuation of what we had talked about in the last meeting. Uh, that just got left off of the bid process and it had to be rebid on its own. And you guys all saw the final number, which is what you, it's the same as the number that it would have been had it made to the previous bid, yes?
Yeah. Similar, yes.
Yeah, okay. It's, it's not a surprise or anything, right? So does anyone have any questions on this? This is almost, pretty much housekeeping for five fifty-five here. Good. And I'd like to do one, two, three on that so we can get it, get our stuff ordered, so we can get it by sometime at twenty-thirty. Okay, so one, two, three on that, please.
And you see projections for eleven thousand, one hundred bucks?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, the next one is the service department supervisor mayor. Would you like to speak on this, or Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson.
Alright.
Yeah, I can, I can go. Uh, so this was originally John, that was how I called the building and equipment maintenance supervisor. I see the need for, for really the facilities, really the same thing, building supervisor, facility supervisor. Since I came, I, we just have nothing but facility issues. I mean, I'm not trying to knock Macedonia at all, but, um, you know, several projects have happened in the short time I've been here under model washing. And, uh, I just see a need for someone to manage contractors. You just look around, the flooring out there. There's, there's, there's things in these buildings that just are coming up all the time. Coming up on the age of, of needing to, to get things taken care of. Age fact system is a huge one, but, um, you know, multiple examples, I wrote down. Painting projects with, um, door issues, spalling concrete on the outside, ADA ramps that we got taken care of. There's a lot of other parking lot issues. So they just, it adds up. So I started thinking, really neat, it's a lot for Steve who's trying to manage parts, streets, drainage complaints, uh, to also be like facilities manager at the same time. So, um, a lot of his job, we would like to fill that position, but the pay was really low when looked at. I mean, like, it's a pay grade seven, which starts about fourteen bucks an hour. You want to get somebody in here with some supervision experience, somebody with, also with maybe some age facts, some facilities experience, maybe some bidding experience and that kind of thing to manage contracts. Fourteen bucks, fifteen, you're, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get that type of person.
And I, I added, I have done a supplemental for everyone with the pay scale. So you can see it'll be going from a seven for the previous position to a nine. And the nine will put this person, this position at the same rates as Mr. Zernak. It'll be the same position, two people in that position, one will focus on roads and one will focus on facilities, yeah.
Yeah, and that could expand to asset management, asset management, things like that, but yes.
Preventive maintenance skills, because we definitely need that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, PMs for all sorts of things. And what we've been running into is the, you know, with Steve trying to manage, especially in the summertime, all the projects going on outside because the weather's conducive. The foreman's been stepping up because we have this role that's not fulfilled before. It pulls that gentleman out as an electrician. And if you hear a lot of times, we have lights out all over town, our street lights are out. We got it to a point where we have the laborers do the labor work and we can have a supervisor supervise the works, we can play a little bit better. And that's kind of the thinking behind what we're trying to accomplish here.
So, and in this, you know, we're not going to be hiring another building supervisor as a position, that'll be eliminated. And we'll be replacing the building supervisor at this position.
You're taking it from a seven to a nine. It's no secret, you guys see what's going on in society. As Director Wilson said, we're not going to go supervisor here at fifteen dollars an hour, it's not going to happen. I mean, it's happening everywhere. They're paying, I think, nineteen dollars at McDonald's. So if you can imagine someone to manage millions of dollars of assets at fifteen bucks an hour, probably not the best idea.
So with all that being said, any more questions on this?
I have a question, just a request. When, when you explain that, would you mind making it clear outside later on the floor? That it's not a new position, we're replacing a existing position?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm all set.
I knew this.
Audience explained it.
No problem, you did fine.
It helps. Alright, so that being said, this is something that we need to get done in short order because we do have leaf season coming up. It's going to be integral for plow season. So I propose we could do this one, two, three, thirty, please.
I agree.
Agree? Alright, thank you very much. And then ordinance number fifty-seven is the clerk of courts. And you can also refer to this, the sheet for going from pay grade seven to eight. Mr. Mayor, would you like to talk on this?
Sure. Given the recent vacancy in that position, and doing some research internally, we have not raised the pay in that role in twenty-two years. And that is a very, very vital role to be a clerk of the courts, that we want to make sure, again, we have someone in that role that's conducive to the operation, knows what they're doing. And at the pay rate that it's at now, I don't feel is justified, it's way, way too low. We need to start attracting the talent that's appropriate for that position, and that's why that's being put in front of you today. Because again, that's a critical role that has, it's, there's a lot of finite details that you have to be accurate on. And I want to make sure that we put someone in that role that understands that, and the pay should be reflecting of that.
Alright, any questions on that? Alright, I would also like to get this at one, two, three, just for that position is hanging open. If you want to be able to hire someone and promise that the pay, lickety-split.
Thank you, I agree. If I may also add, Director Smith has been our HR director, and she has also been our clerk of courts, putting in oodles and oodles of hours. This is a big piece to take that away from her because we have some interviews that'll be completed, and we think that we may be able to move forward if this gets passed.
And we did mention in the job posting that the pay was under review currently, so the candidates really swear that this could be an optional, should you go.
Good. Alright, if we could do one, two, three then on that, I'll take that one. Uh, the next one is for the police vehicles.
So we have currently four Tahoe's on order. When they, when they actually have a build date is when we're told that's going to happen. So essentially where we're at today is, we have an order for four Tahoe's, which we're going to have for the supervisory vehicles. We have an order for six Dodge Chargers, which we don't have a build date for. And this is the, put an order in for six Ford Explorers.
We dodged Durangos.
I'm sorry, Dodge Durango was our question.
So which was directly?
So this is for the Fords.
Four Tahos.
The Ford, well, they're all going to be the police version, so. The, the point being, what we're, we're falling under now is, our last order for the Dodge Durangos, we thought we were in the queue and they came back and said, no, you're not. We, we need cars like yesterday. This is an insurance for us to get something. We don't know who's going to build these cars, and the way that it's going with the chips and everything in society, I have no idea. We have some of our police vehicles that are over a hundred thousand miles, it's going to be on a money pit. I mean, these things are, they're, they only last so long. So what this is basically doing is, if we get the Fords first, we're going to take the Fords. If we get the Dodges, we're going to take the Dodgers. We don't quite know who's going to get the vehicles to us, but we need them, and we need them yesterday.
Did I explain that accurately, which you just did?
And we're not keeping all sixteen.
So the thought being, if for some godforsaken reason we get stuck with all of them, we can't sell them, Mark and I looked into that. We can get basically what we put into them back out of them?
Up to five.
Up to five, so we, but we need another vehicle on the DB, so we may keep one of those. Because I know the DB vehicle's got a oodle of miles on that as well. But basically Ford has said they will take their vehicles back if we get the Dodgers displaced. So they, they won't, it'll be like, this never happened, they're good, everyone's happy, we move on from it. So we're assuming a little bit of risk here, but I have to make sure that our safety forces have vehicles to do their job. This is, this is, this is critical at this point. I'm deeply concerned about it, and that's why this is in front of you today, because we have to make sure they have vehicles that do their job.
When did we do that with the Durangos? Because I looked for the last, like, year and a half and did not see it, but I remember it coming through.
Yeah, I can remember them.
The Tahos were, was in April of... The Tahos were in April, for sure.
Then November twenty-one.
November twenty-one was the Durango.
Because November, they, they canceled our order, so we're just...
I didn't know that.
Yeah, they, we thought we were in the queue, and they came back and said, no, you're not. And they did that to a lot of people, because I think the manufacturing is just, it's a lot of whack right now.
Okay, we're supposed to have, Ford is supposed to start production in, I'm sorry, November, Dodge in January. So we're not going to see anything until next year anyway.
Regardless which one they're...
Exactly.
When do we, when do we, when do we see the time? There's, there's no data.
It's the least to buy, so. We'll get the financing, five years, start over.
But not till they're delivered?
Right.
Okay, so we're not putting out eight hundred thousand...
No, we're not putting out, no, not putting anything.
All these cars, okay.
Yeah.
Good question. But we could get committed to them if, if we end up taking the Explorers, we might be compelled to take the Dodge, the Durangos.
There is a small chance that we could end up with twelve vehicles.
But nothing stops us from selling them to other cities.
Right, but keep in mind when I said the Ford piece of that, they said that if the Dodge was third before them, they're, they're good. Don't worry about it.
They'll find someone else.
Yeah, no matter what, these vehicles are in high demand. I mean, I started calling around the country, because we need them now. And, and I call everywhere and some places have them, and everyone came and got them all, and they're gone.
So I'd like to do one, two, three on this and see the ball rolling, because we're, we're making, you know, making a commitment to wait.
It's going to take quite a while.
Alright, thank you, folks. And then Dave, you got that note there, just got messed up on the dealership, so we're all good to go on that. Alright, we will have two motions for donations, and Jan and I will take care of both of those. I wanted to quickly touch on the fireworks issue.
What's, what's the second motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, the second motion is a donation of five thousand dollars to the police department. There was a donation last, it's, there was a donation last year.
It's on the new agenda.
It's on the new agenda.
Okay.
There was a donation last year by the same people, of the same amount, for the same purpose. And they expressed an interest in doing it every year, so this is, this year will be doing it. It just got added last minute, so it wasn't on the...
Can I, can I throw another donation in there at the last minute?
Do you have an official?
They got the product.
Absolutely. Who would like to second that?
I'll second it.
Alright.
Okay, there's a motion to accept the donation of an American flag by the Tom Derneyer family off of Hampton Road. It was, uh, this is Derneyer's father's, it's never been put up, it was over his coffin. And I was just given this and asked about it today, and he asked me if we needed an American flag. And I says, the city can always use an, an American flag because they get tattered in the weather and the wind, and it will be put to good use at appropriate time, and they were fine with that.
So they want us to actually fly the flag?
When, when it's appropriate, whenever the administration decides, yes.
Probably would be nice to let them know whether or not, what happened.
Here, here for Brad.
Mine's still over the state house, my brother's got a farm.
Alright, so this fireworks issue, everyone saw all the emails. John was nice enough to collect all the data together and made this nice map, because he noticed that most of the, the people against the ban were coming from the same neighborhood. Um, and I think you might have noticed in the emails too, that there was a lot of confusion about what the current laws are and what our possibilities might be if we pass legislation. So John wrote up a summary of all the emails and the topics we got, so he's going to read that in correspondence from the clerk. My thoughts as president is I really don't plan on introducing any legislation with this anytime soon. There are fifteen to twenty days within a year that it is legal to shoot off fireworks. And I, and I think also residents really don't have a grasp as to what the exact, uh, what the laws are. So, um, I'll go over that a little bit in New Business today. And just keep asking residents for more info, you know, throughout the year. There's going to be, the next one coming up is going to be Labor Day. And like I said, there's fifteen to twenty days a year, so we'll keep asking, we'll keep educating people on what the laws are. Um, I put up a page on the website today, it's Macedonia O H U S slash fireworks, and that has a really good summary from the Fire Martial, that has information about what the exact laws are. So you guys can maybe get educated on, on what they are. The biggest part of it is that, you know, not only just the days, but the times is from four o'clock to eleven o'clock. Except for on New Year's, it goes from one AM to one AM on New Year's Day. Let people know what they are, let people know that we are not canceling, you know, Macedonia doesn't have before the July celebration, we do our fireworks at other times of year. Some people were confused that we were going to cancel some celebration that we don't even have. Send them to the websites to, to, you know, slash fireworks, to help them understand the rules, and keep telling people to go ahead and, and email John. Now, if anyone else feels more strongly about this and wants to introduce legislation, I can't stop from that, you're welcome to go ahead. But, but I'm cool with just writing it out for the year and collecting more information and more thoughts as people experience the effects of, of the new laws and regulations in, in, in Ohio.
And after seeing the new law in effect, because I think I told you, my nephew acquired the fireworks that are allowed. Nothing like what he had was around by my house, and it was most of the reds around by my house. What I saw was exactly the same thing that they've blown off all these years. There wasn't any, I mean, what he blew up, holy moly, they're awesome.
Yeah, some people do some, some people are very skilled.
But he has, he has two acres, so.
Yeah, that, that really helps.
Big difference.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, if anyone ever, you know, wants to talk about this more, like I said, we'll, we'll maybe visit it next year, before the Fourth of July again and see if...
You're going to mention today that it's eligible for Labor Day and New Year's?
Yeah, I have, I have a whole bunch of stuff that I'm going to talk about. I'll talk about that in New Business. John will talk about the responses and correspondence from the clerk.
We didn't have any legal complaints or anything, so.
Yeah, and, and a resident pointed out to me today that having the law, the well-stated law that you have to stop at eleven, actually made people stop at eleven this year as opposed to just go on indefinitely, so, yeah.
I appreciate you taking this, because one phone call started this when I talked to you, and I said, oh boy, let's get them all out.
I didn't have the talk, because I wanted to know, my neighbor had asked me about it. And, and I didn't know, you know, what people in Macedonia were thinking whatsoever, so I'm really glad that you brought that up and then we're able to kind of get the ball rolling on this, so. Yeah, just keep collecting information, and like I said, if anyone has, gets any strong feelings with either way or the other, we can, we can revisit it, alright?
We, we still need to do this as a group, not just one person thinking, we got to do this now.
Yeah, and that was never my intention to do that.
And I think it's a very good idea to get a lay of the land after more holidays or have gone by.
Yeah, people, some of them might go crazy on Chinese New Year, and, you know.
I still haven't figured out where that one giant one is. It's to the west.
Giant.
There's two that go off.
Is it, is it the, the casino? The casino?
No, no, it's straight, I thought it was Brexwell, but it's not that far.
Oh, really?
I still haven't figured out where. But it's cool.
Did you hear those big booms this year? I did not.
No, there were no boomers, they're just... I'm not sure if they've taken away the boom, because you notice the ones we blew off at the festival didn't have that boom. Yeah, so maybe they've taken that out of us.
A specific...
That was all my process that they said.
Alright, um, anything from anyone else, folks? We actually did great on time today, thank you very much, everyone. Anything else?
Alright. Winning lottery.
See you on the floor then. Don't fear for Haslam.
Hello and welcome to the August twenty-fifth council meeting. It is seven thirty PM. Well, Mr. Hoover, please call the roll.
Ms. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Ms. Ventura.
Here.
Now I ask American Legion Chaplain Tom O'Brien to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
With bowed heads, let us pray. Almighty God, we pray thee to give guidance to our elected officials so that they may work in a harmonious and honest manner. Give our elected officials the courage to work together for the common good of our community and to provide us with the services that are necessary for all of us to enjoy. We ask thee Almighty God that you watch over our police and fire personnel, for they are first responders to crises that may arise at any time, day or night. Keep them safe so at the end of their workday they may return unharmed to their homes and loved ones. We further ask Almighty God that you keep a watchful eye over all our city employees, those civil servants whose work is done for the benefit of our community. In closing, oh God, our mercy, we ask for thy blessing and comfort for our neighbors who may be suffering from mental or physical disabilities. Cheer them and bring them thy blessing of health and happiness. Amen.
Now please face the flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you as always, Mr. O'Brien, we appreciate you. Okay, next on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on Thursday, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments will be next. We have two people signed up, and we will start with Ms. Karen Bartolozzi. We ask that you come to the microphone. We give you five minutes, the chief will keep the time. We ask that you give your name and address as well, please. I think you've done this before, you know the routine. Yeah, it's been a while.
Karen Bartolozzi, one-three-seven-seven Driftwood Lane. I like to have the fireworks not be...
Like a ban on fireworks?
Uh, that, what do you call it? I don't, what's, what's the...
A ban, you're saying a ban.
Would you like a ban on fireworks or not?
Yes, with the new law, yeah, I like, yeah, that's my opinion, so that's the first.
Opting out.
Yeah, opting out of...
Opting out. Okay, the other thing, next thing is the, um, the service department. Steven and his crew, the guys who dig the ditches, did a great job on mine and my neighbors last week. Because of that, Steven and them also found a leak that happened like a week later, that was very small, because years ago we had that fountain that burst in the same pipe area. So they were proactive, I thought, didn't know, I called, put the message with Dan and, no, Steven, I'm sorry, I didn't know him yet. And, um, they were proactive in Cleveland, water was out there that day, checked it out, came back, came Monday. Thunderstorms came Tuesday, nine o'clock they started, by one, they were done. So I thank the service department for first digging the ditches and then being proactive and finding a leak for... My neighbor actually was across the street from us that was coming this way. So that was a nice kudos for the service department. The other, now because of that, though, we have a big area of the road... The other, now because of that, though, we have a big area of the road that they put dirt in. That's really needs to be fixed. Is the city going to do that or?
Where, where are you referring to?
Well, they dug up, they dug the road up.
Oh, it's Cleveland water?
Yeah, and they put dirt, but it's going over, it's like.
So basically, the way that works is they'll go and do their work. We have the contractor come out and do that work and, and clear that up. Generally, we'll try to bind that so it's not a problem. I'll have Director Wilson take a look at it for the interim because generally we'll fill it just so it's level. But we'll have a contractor.
But now it's.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it. We'll do what we can to make it level.
With that, I'm being Driftwood. I emailed the engineer last year about how bad Driftwood was. And it was just three years old, not even three years old. And the answer was, we're going to seal it last year. You did, it's worse now. My, in front of my house now, I have stuff that happened this year. And I'd like to know what the road maintenance program is going to do to help Driftwood. Besides what the water company did, but Driftwood. I'd like to know what's going to happen this year. It's already almost September.
Well, we'll have him take a look at it and we'll get in touch with you after he assesses it because I haven't been out there to see it, so.
It's, I can put.
He has to, I mean, I rely on the engineer to look at it.
No, that's fine. No, no, it's, it's triple what it was before. Not only that, but just right in the first three houses plus what was back down on the other end. That was bad the second, third year. They did a bad job on this road. It's not even, it's four years old, I think, this month now. It looks like it's 15 to 20 years old. I didn't have what they have now in the center before you guys did it in 2018. Something's changed and it ends, you know, I just appreciate what's going to happen this year. And you sealed it last year.
The cracks in the road are wide enough now, getting wide enough where there's, they're going to be freezing and thawing issues, Mr. Wilson, where it's going to deteriorate even more.
I could put two quarters in and it just, one of them just happened in front of my house because my house was fine in January, February because I used to walk my dog and it was all fine. And then the big snow came in January and after that cleared away, boom, that was, and it's like 20 feet. And the first, so somebody comes out and please inspect it and let me know as a resident what's going to happen. Appreciate that.
It's your street and that's the next one over. They're all, they're getting wider and wider.
Well, it, it, and it goes this way on the end.
They get the dump well there too.
Right, it's, and my ditch, I want it covered, my ditch on Shepherd Road. Can you cover that ditch?
We, the, the city does not do ditch enclosures.
Yeah, to do it.
There's a number of reasons for that.
Well, I know somebody who's had it done by the city recently, like two people. So, but the one on Shepherd Road is so deep, the service department hates cleaning it out with the leaves. Not mine, not the Driftwood one, the Shepherd one.
Doesn't do it anymore. You, you get, have to get a permit from the city. I had mine done about five or six years ago and the city wasn't doing it then and still.
Stacy told me on Wednes, Monday that Bart got his done, she got hers done. She didn't know what Bart got, somehow got his done. And they live next to each other. I don't know. I don't, I didn't check it out.
The city doesn't.
I know that, I've heard that.
You can do it and get, and get a permit from the city to do it.
It's a city or the county for the permit. Does county have a say so?
The city has a permit. You have to permit, you have to buy all the materials and purchase the labor.
It doesn't go to the county with their more regulations, it's your stuff, right?
There, there's differences between the regional system, but I mean, I can talk about this for an hour and I'll, I'll get in touch with you. I can explain, I know what happened over there.
I like to what the process is to do the one.
But I want to make sure that the misconceptions cleared up, so I'll, I'll get in touch with you.
That's fine, because my neighbor down the street too, when they were doing my ditch, said all the cities that they could do it too. It said, I know it's a no, but I keep seeing it and hearing it, so. All right, well, I appreciate, appreciate the offer.
I'll give you a call. I'll, I'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Engineer.
It's, it's so much more complicated than that. It's so situational that I, I, I don't know that I could verbalize that and make it make sense to anyone.
And it would, it would help because you still have the city water. I crow in Burleshire every time it rains.
No, that's, that's D S S S S. So that's, that's what I'm saying. Like this is so complicated, it's hard to explain. But if anyone has any questions, feel free to contact me. I'll be happy to answer them.
Just expect an hour of good conversation.
Right, we'll talk about water, it's water. Yeah.
I don't know what to ask. What's good there or can't be done enough, so I'm asking, being told about stuff, so.
I'll, I'll get in touch with you. I have your number. I won't forget. All right, next up, we have State Representative Romer here. Please step to the microphone, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm State Representative Bill Romer, and it's really nice to be back here. And I say back here because and going back and looking, I think the first time I ever spoke to Macedonia City Council and the mayor was in 2008, so 14 years. One of the commitments I made when I ran at that time for Summit County Council, now at the state level, is that I would go to every community every year because I want to make sure that I know the issues facing the elected officials. You know, I just heard a discussion of fireworks as an example. Talk to the residents as well as the department heads to make sure that I know what issues are going on so that I have the ability to then vote better, I'll just say. It, it makes it easier for me to vote when I have proper input from everyone in my district. Due to redistricting, I will hopefully be representing Macedonia in the future. But it's really, really nice to be back. It's nice also to see a, a little bit younger audience here because I remember the last time I was here, I think there were, there were two gentlemen that always used to sit in the front for every meeting and I had a chance to meet them many, many times. But I think these guys, if you added up all of their ages, wouldn't, wouldn't be close. It's probably not close to mine either. Don't, don't say anything about that. I did, relative to my commitment, I felt really good. Right before I came here, I was meeting with the mayor of Clinton. And a lot of people here might not even know where Clinton is, but it's a community of about 1,000 in southwest Summit County. And Mayor Elegy said, she said, Representative, you are the only state elected official that has ever come to Clinton. And I go there very regularly and that would be my commitment if I'm fortunate enough to be elected. That I'll work very closely with the administration, with council and with residents, you know, to make sure that I'm doing as good a job as I can representing all of my district, all of the new 31st district. With that, I don't talk a whole lot either because I know everyone's time is valuable. If anyone has any questions now, I'd be open to them or after the meeting, either way.
Thank you.
With that, well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda is correspondence from the clerk.
Yes, I have a number of them. At the July 28th council meeting, there was requested feedback from the residents on the state's recent law change as it pertains to fireworks, and this has been the response thus far. Heard back from 21 different Macedonia residents and households. Of those, 13 were for a ban on fireworks and eight were against. The reasons given for those in favor of a ban ranged from they were too dangerous and should be left to professionals. It can be traumatic for veterans and animals. And those that light them don't always follow the rules and/or social etiquette and instead shoot them off at any time of the day and night. And those that were against the ban said the police would be distracted and spend an inordinate amount of time responding to complaints. Fireworks are a tradition celebrating America and that residents should be able to celebrate occasions with fireworks beyond Independence Day. And then one of those residents, Wes Hensley of Oakview Drive, weighed in on their opinion on the fireworks, which was added to the summary, but also went on to say, I've been noticing more homes in the community that are not keeping up with their yard keeping. It is unattractive and a detriment to the community. I would like to know if this is being addressed. And then finally, this was sent to Chief Ripley. Said, my husband and I would like to thank all of you from the bottom of our hearts for making our granddaughter Everly absolutely the happiest little girl this past Saturday. She squealed so loudly when the ambulance and fire truck came and again, when the police cars showed up. Everyone was so kind to her and so gracious for making her day and taking the time to let her sit in the vehicles and show her the equipment. You're just awesome. I'm enclosing some too many photos. Please share with all the guys that were there. Hope the pics make you smile too. And they attached a bunch of photos of the lemonade stand. And that's from Ann and Tim at 8505 Bella Drive.
And Mr. Tim had approached me in the park a lot and kind of scared me because I was on my way out and he walked up with a bunch of little flyers. And I thank you guys for, for sending some of our folks over there because I know you made that little girl's day. And I know the way he described it to me kind of was illustrated there, so thank you for that. Awesome. Okay, we'll move right into pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number 49.
I'd like to offer ordinance 49, 2022 for its first reading by title only, please.
An emergency ordinance declaring improvements to a certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcel, requiring the owner of the improvements on such parcel to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an optimum municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709 dot 40, 5709 dot 42, and 5709 dot 43.
So Director Veras, I know there's three of these. Can you give us just a brief synopsis of what a TIF is and how that works so a lot of people understand?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. TIF is short for Taxicent financing. It's an economic development tool used throughout the United States. And it's used here in Macedonia, obviously. What it does is it'll redirect property tax, taxes paid. Now, the property owner does not pay any additional property tax. It's just a redirection of the county's share of the property tax. Comes then to the municipality in order to use those additional monies to pay for public infrastructure improvements near and around each parcel listed in the TIF ordinance.
Thank you. Ordinance number 50.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 50 for its first, first reading by title only, please.
An emergency ordinance declaring improvements to a certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcel, requiring the owner of the improvements on such parcel to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a space-placed municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709 dot 40, 5709 dot 42, and 5709 dot 43.
Thank you. Ordinance number 51. May I, I'd like to offer ordinance number 51, uh, by title only for its first reading.
An emergency ordinance declaring improvements to a certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcel, requiring the owner of the improvements on such parcel to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a wave car wash municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709 dot 40, 5709 dot 42, and 5709 dot 43.
Thank you. Ordinance number 52.
Mr. Veras, I'd like to offer ordinance number 52, 2022 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Valley View Property Maintenance LLC for a senior gutter cleaning program for the fall 2022 season and appropriating funds for the same.
So essentially, I'm going to just sweep with a broad brush here for 52, 53, and 54. But the gutter program, the snow removal and the refuse collection is essentially something we do for our senior citizens that are below a certain income level to try and help them to take care of these things that we find very, very important. So it's at a nominal cost, but there's an application process for that. If you have any questions or you would like to be signed up, you can contact our finance department. Director Veras would be more than happy to explain that, whether you qualify or not. What is your pleasure?
First, I'd like to make a comment. President, one of the two gentlemen who sat in the front row when he came here was the impetus behind this. All these three, and kind of festivals, we've got something going. So I'd like to ask that we post and pass according to law, ordinance number 52, 2022, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We might as well point out who they are. It's Mike Cronjack and Chuck Loparo, which we have little nameplates on their chairs because anyone's been around here for a while knew that those guys sat there for many years and pastored us.
Chuck was the impetus.
Yes.
It's a great, great program.
Yes, it's amazing.
It was by my house every day.
Ordinance number 53.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 53, 2022 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance providing for a senior snow removal program for the 2022, 2023 winter season.
Uh, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to pass and post according to law, ordinance 53, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 53 carries. Ordinance number 54.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 54, 2020 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance providing for and authorizing a refuse collection subsidy for senior citizens and making appropriations for that subsidy.
And what is your pleasure?
I'd like to offer, uh, my pages keep sticking together, I apologize. Ordinance number 54, 2022, uh, to adopt and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 54 carries. Resolution number 55.
I move to offer a resolution number 55, 2022 for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Environmental Flooring Group LLC for the City of Macedonia Recreation Center Activity Room Flooring Remodel Project.
Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just the carry on from the last time we were in here to get the activity room added to our project at the rec center. So this was once again posted to public bid and we've settled with Environmental Flooring Group to finish that project when the product could arrive, once we gain approval and submit an order officially. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what's your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution 55, 2022 and post the same according to law. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 55 carries. Ordinance number 56.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 56, 2022 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending ordinance number four, 2021 relative to the compensation schedule for the non-union city employees of Macedonia and recognizing the amended position description for the position of service department supervisor.
Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, it was essentially a position that was already vacant for building man and supervisor. And as I've looked at the, uh, the department since I've been here, realized a serious need for this with all the projects that happen and, and the older buildings and facilities that we have here in Macedonia. So I would like to fill the position, but the pay was quite low for the economy and where things are today. So we are eliminating that position, creating a new position. So it's essentially still the same position, just raising the pay grade from seven to a nine to make it more comparable. Still with supervisory titles so that we have the ability to maybe add other supervisory tasks as needed in the Department of Public Service.
And just to enhance that a little bit more, we realized with where it was at, the starting pay was around $15 an hour. As I stated in the council caucus room, it's hard to attract talent that's going to be responsible for millions of dollars of assets at $15 an hour. It's more conducive to have someone at the pay grade that we can get somebody at to, to be responsible for that. And that's something that Director Wilson and I have talked about, considered for considerable amounts of time. Agreed?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 56, 2022 and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 56 carries. Ordinance number 57.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to present ordinance number 57, 2022 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending ordinance number four, 2021 relative to the compensation schedule for the non-union city employees of Macedonia.
So the recent vacancy in the clerk of courts, we, we realized that the pay had not been adjusted in 22 years. That's something that I took a long, hard look at and again, realized the complexity of that job of that job and the necessity of it, that we needed to raise the pay for that, which is why this is put before council today, because we obviously feel the need is there. And again, after 22 years of not having an adjustment, I feel it's time to make an adjustment there so that we can have the appropriate person in that role.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance number 57, 2022, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 57 carries. Ordinance number 58.
I move to offer ordinance number 58, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Greve Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram for the purchase of six Ford Explorers through the city police department in an amount not to exceed $422,000, without the necessity of advertisement and formal bidding.
Chief Golden?
Thank you, Mayor. We're having extremely hard time getting vehicles, as most people are aware, so we are gonna try for Dodges and Fords and see whichever one we can get first, because the last several orders have been canceled.
And I went on a bit of a tangent in the caucus again on this one, but basically, we have vehicles that are approaching 100,000 miles on the police department, not really conducive to the operation, and when you hit that high of mileage, you know you're gonna have more problems. The issue we're running into is we had an order for six Dodge Durango Pursuit Vehicles. We were in the queue, and they took us out of the queue and said, "You're gone, thanks very much for playing." So we are ordering Dodges and Fords to see who comes in first and trying to make sure that we have vehicles for our police to do their job. That's essentially where we're at.
This sounds like a crazy sitcom scheme. I hope it works.
We gotta, we gotta make sure they have vehicles. That's kind of a critical piece. Otherwise, we'll be going to dealership and I don't know how that would ever work, but God, I hope we don't have to do that. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry, we need to make an amendment.
Yeah, I move to amend ordinance number 58, 2022, to replace any references to Greve Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram with statewide forward leaning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number 58, 2022, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 58 carries. Do we have any other?
Make a motion to accept the donations with values set forth in the health care donor list provided by the city administration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have to point something out with this director. Smith is not here this evening. She's been kind of assuming the role since the vacancy we've had in the clerk of courts. So not only is she doing HR, but she's doing the clerk of courts. And in that time, she's also trying to get this health fair up and running and get all these donors involved in this as well. I'm gonna read all them off because I think that they're due at least that to show that they care for our city employees and things that we're gonna be giving away at the health fair for our city employees, which I think is very well deserved. But I want to thank Advanced Auto Parts, Bob Evans, Cake and Candy Center, Casa D'Angelo, Chick-fil-A, Dave's Cosmic Subs, Giant Eagle, Break Clips, Classic Laminations, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Pedal Place Florist, Starbucks, Sherwin-Williams, Carol Wolfski, Outback Steakhouse, The Rotary Club of Nordonia Hills, and Home Depot, who is donating an outdoor fire pit estimated at $200. Pretty cool prize to win. Thank you. Next, any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept as an anonymous donation the amount of $5,000 to be utilized by the Macedonia Police Department for certain law enforcement purposes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other legislative actions or motions?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation of an American flag by the Tom Dernmeyer family from Hampton Road. This flag was over the coffin of his father-in-law and has been sitting in their household, and they feel it would be better used by the city at the appropriate time and to be hung in front of City Hall or any other designated needed place. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. That's an honorable thing for them to donate. Definitely appreciated. And next, we'll move into the mayor's report. I'm gonna touch briefly on fireworks, and I'm gonna start with Chief Golden here. How many calls did we have for fireworks around the Fourth of July that you're aware of?
About the average? I don't have the number.
No major incidents that we're aware of. I just wanted to point that out because it's important when we talk about who's in favor or opposed to whether or not we've had any incidents, so thank you for that. I was attending the junior council, oh, I'm sorry, the activity fair at the high school this week. I was happy to have our students, some of our students there with us, to be at the table to kind of show the new kids coming in, some of the different things they do. And you guys have a lot of activities under you, and I gotta give you a lot of credit because I don't know how you do it, because I couldn't do it. But they spent some time with me, talking with any interested students that want to be a part of our junior city council. When we started this, we said all along that we were gonna have five, so I think we have an opening for one. In that signup sheet, I think we probably had about, what, 20 people at least? So there's probably 20 other students that may be interested in it, so I'm leaving it up to you guys to decide who that person's gonna be, because I'm certainly not gonna choose, so good luck with that, and I wish you well. But thank you for being a part of that and taking your time. I think that was awesome, and it was really cool to talk to the students about what we're doing, what we're trying to accomplish, and I think we're only gonna grow from here, so I can't thank you guys enough. And I'm really surprised you're all here considering school starts tomorrow. I was kind of taken aback that you're all here, so thank you for that. Next up is the TJ Maxx is coming. That's kind of the big carrot I've been dangling for a long time. It's been in the mix, they've been working on it, but TJ Maxx is coming next to Burlington. And I know a lot of people are excited about that, including my wife, which doesn't really excite me because it's just gonna cost me a lot of money, so.
We're not getting your votes.
I know that, right?
Let's laugh a lot.
So I'm sure she'll spend a lot of time there, and if it makes her happy, happy wife, happy life, right? IHOP now has full power. That's a good thing. They're gonna start moving forward, but like everything that we're dealing with in the world now, materials are hard to come by, but once they were able to establish full power, the project should be up and running a lot more quickly than it was in the past. School starts, actually started today, so keep an eye out for bus stops. If the bus stop sign comes out, you need to stop. That's a very important thing. I'm sure our chief will touch on it during his report, but we've had a lot of complaints in the past about people blowing past the bus. I can tell you, if you blow past that bus with the stop sign out, you will get a ticket. It's not gonna be a question. There's gonna be no excuse that you're gonna get out of that one, so please be cognizant of the buses on the road. We've had a ton of people giving us compliments for the flowers that we put up and down Route 82, and I am just so elated that we actually have people calling in for positivity. It's very nice to hear that. So for all of you that have called about our beautiful blossoming flowers, we appreciate that. It's so nice to hear the compliments we've had. And the irony is, we've got a lot of people that don't even live in our community call and say, "Wow, those are amazing." And I can't thank you all enough for that, because it's so nice to hear that. But wait till you see what we do next, because our beautification efforts are only just beginning, so there's much more to come. You'll see some more here in the fall very, very soon, and I think you all like it. I don't even think council knows yet what we're gonna do, so you guys will, you'll be impressed. And thank you for Director Wilson for being a big part of that, because he's a major help with that, and essentially it's me talking about it and him and his guys doing it, so thank you. And last but not least, don't drive distracted, put the phones down, don't text and drive. If any of my junior council people ever caught driving in their car with the phone in here, I'm gonna give you an earful that you're not gonna wanna hear, so remember that from me. And that concludes my report. We'll move right into committee reports.
Parks and Recreation Commission had their August meeting on August 22nd. It was a nice, short, compact meeting. I think Parks and Recreation is moving along smoothly. They're getting all their projects done, waiting on a lot of stuff. There was a lot of tree and brush clearing around Longwood Park, which is very noticeable for anyone who goes up there, and it's a ton of work, because I don't know when the last time it's been done, so great job on that. The programming for youth sports is through the roof this year, 149 for flag football and 198 for soccer. We've even got some girls out there on the flag football team, I believe. Touch a Truck happened on the 11th. I went to that. It was a fantastic event. There were tons of people there, tons and tons of happy kids there, so good work to Cindy Funk and Sam Edgar on that. And our next meeting will be Wednesday, September 21st, in the Activity Room at the Rec Center, and that's all. Blessings.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have an update for the finance committee. We have a tentative meeting on September 22nd. I say tentative because we haven't had a chance to communicate it to everybody until tonight. It's gonna be the five-year capital meeting, and the finance director has proposed an hour to an hour and a half prior to council that evening. So if anybody on council has an objection to that evening, let me know, and we'll work with the finance director. It's September 22nd.
So it's our second council meeting in September? Yeah, yeah. You're right.
And I've got a list of some others that I'll send out. I don't need to read them all out. They go into October, December, and December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move right into department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. As usual, we'll start off talking about the vet's bathroom. It's going really well. I think we have four, almost four walls at this point, so it's exciting to see that go up and see the structure there. The floor in the City Hall, we got that completed in the paint. It looks amazing. I won't take a whole lot of credit. I'd take a little bit of credit. Diana did a lot of work on that. It's been really a team effort. As the mayor talked about, flower baskets have been a big part of our week, our day-to-day operation. We've watered them, and that's quite an operation in and of itself, but that really makes a difference. So yeah, we are looking into some other options in the next, taking it to the next level, I guess, as far as flower baskets.
Let's leave it there, Director Wilson.
Parents and tables.
Streetlights, we are a little behind on streetlights, as we talked about in committee, because like we said, our electrician's doing so many different tasks, so we are gonna do a push here in the next couple of weeks to really try to get those all up to par and all fixed before the time change and fall sets in and all that. And the last biggest thing that I have is we got the ADA ramps completed outside of City Hall, and now we hear a lot of positive comments and positivity about those, so that was a big, big one. That's all, end of report.
Thank you. Thank you for getting that done. The seniors are very happy about that. Director Gelati.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. As of today, our road resurfacing is finished for the season. Paved eight roads this year, all total, including Island Road, that was the big one, so we hope everybody enjoys the new roads, and we'll do it all again next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Chaddick?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna have to find some stuff to talk about. Council member Brandt took it all. Now, I wanna highlight Karen Bartolozzi. Thank you for being here today. She is an active member of our PRC and has been doing a great job for a number of years, so it's great to see you here at council. Maintenance week just concluded. Monday, we reopened. We were able to get a ton of projects done around the facility, including a lot of pool maintenance, draining the pools, and getting acid washing done to them, and then obviously getting them refilled and prepared. A lot of great things went on, thanks to the service department. Director Wilson, thanks for sending a crew over to us that were able to help with a lot of the maintenance for the course of the week. We are, piece by piece, I will say this very loosely, piece by piece, we are putting together the flooring project from some of the stuff that was previously approved. We are really hoping to have this project done by the end of '22, and that is just really hoping, because every time we order something, it gets put on delay. So that's what we're doing now. We ask everybody to bear with us during the fourth quarter of this year as we try to get this project completed before heading into the tough part of the winter season. Our sports programs are just booming right now. They're the highest registration we've ever had as a department, and in the summer, the man raise program was the highest it's ever been as well. In the last month, we've been able to get the AEDs put up in the parks, minus Veterans Park. Veterans Memorial Park does not have the AED set yet. That will be done once the construction's done, because it's actually gonna go on the bathroom building. So really excited to have those in the park. As council member Brandt said, we've got the brush cleaning at Longwood Park that's been going on. It looks awesome over there. There's still a lot of work. That project's literally only halfway through, so a lot of work to do with cleanup there still. Field C lighting will be going in in October, so we will have that prepared for the spring season, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Verris?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report on one thing. The write-in, write-out project, I took down the special assessment filing yesterday with the dollar that you have to pay for the filing. Of the 12 parcels that were assessed, three of them paid upfront, so nine are being assessed over a 20-year period on their property tax returns. I'm sorry, the property tax bills. I want to thank everyone who was involved. Three mayors, Cook, Bigley, or Rini, I can't think of the last one. Oh, yeah, Molna. Law Director Mark Jaghetti, Executive Assistant Diana Augustine, City Engineer Joe Gelati, Municipal Financial Advisor Matt Stuzinski, Special Assessment Bond Counsel Kathy Halter, and Griswold Virginia Benjamin, and Blake Beachler, and of course, our city historian, Chief Ripley. End of my report.
And you slaughtered everyone's name but the hardest one, Gelati. I'll never understand that. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. City historian. I'd just like to remind everyone, hydrant flushing is still ongoing. The crews are done with Macedonia. They moved into Northfield Center in Sagamore. We are having labor issues there also. Kids have gone back to school, so working on some things, but they will be completed this year. Also, we're having issues with parts for vehicles that are down. If you can imagine the size of our vehicles, service got one of our engines down because at one point out of five pieces of true fire apparatus, we only had two running. That lasted about a day. Service was a huge help to get those up and running, so kudos to them. And just to let everyone know, I got a call from a North Pole, so that's in the works. And we are going to have our open house, since last year's was such a great success, on October 13th. Come to open house, get a meal, one of the food trucks, and then come to council meeting. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Golden?
Thank you, Mayor. As you indicated, school's back in. If you drive by a school, the flashing yellow signs will be on. It's 20 in all the school zones. Watch out for the kids at the bus stops. I did some active shooter training at the high school yesterday. I have some more planned at some other schools. Seems to be the popular topic these days. I made Facebook, I guess. The mayor sent me a screenshot, helping some of the freshmen today. That's about all I have. Anything you can think of?
Thank you for helping that student get into their locker. You are Facebook famous now.
Yeah. I got in his locker, he could not, so, and then I was shooed away by Mrs. Coleman, so I was no help to the young man.
Well, thank you. Director Collins?
Thank you, Mayor. Only one major project since the last council meeting. I rolled out a new backup server. It took our daily backup times from over three hours to last night's random 54 minutes, so while that doesn't affect most of the people in day-to-day, there are users that are here at night when they run, and that's police and fire, so that just brings down network congestion and allows things to get done quicker. If I'm able to back it up quicker, I'm also able to restore it quicker. Back on local play, I don't have to do much thinking.
Thank you. Director Gaddati?
I have no report, sir.
Any unfinished business?
I'd like to address the fireworks laws, and I want to first thank all the residents that wrote with their opinions. I want to encourage everyone to keep sending in opinions. that wrote with their opinions. I want to encourage everyone to keep sending in opinions. There was some maybe confusions by residents about what the Ohio fireworks laws are. There will be fireworks allowed on 15 to 20 days throughout the year, including Fourth of July and days around that one, Labor Day and the weekend before it, DiWale, which is in October and November, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, Chinese New Year, which is in January and February, Cinco de Mayo, which is the 5th of May, Memorial Day and the weekend before that, and Juneteenth, which is on June 19. So residents, you know, there will be a whole year of this new law coming up, and different days where you'll experience maybe your neighbors shooting off fireworks. So yeah, please keep the discussion going. Keep your comments coming to jhoover@macedonia.oh.us. Some other points with this law is that you're only allowed to discharge these fireworks from 4:00 PM until 11:00 PM. No person under 18 is permitted to handle or discharge fireworks. You can't use fireworks while in possession or control of or under the influence of any intoxicating liquor, beer, controlled substance. If you violate that, that could be a first-degree misdemeanor. Put a page up on the website. If you go to macedonia.oh.us/fireworks, there is a really nice sheet up there from the Ohio Department of Commerce and the Fire Marshal that lays out everything that residents need to know about this law and the stipulations therein. So I would like anyone that has an opinion to maybe check that out, slash fireworks on the website, and then go ahead and give us your information. And I also want people to know that this is not a referendum. This isn't a vote that we're, you know, we're not going to tally up who gets more of this. We just want to hear from residents and need to know if it's something that we should look into or just leave it as is. So once again, I appreciate everyone writing in with their opinions and keep them coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Any new business?
I'd like to give a reminder for folks that the Nerdonia Hills Branch Library is having a wholesale this weekend. So if you're interested, please stop by and support the library.
What days and times do you know?
It's just Saturday, I believe, the 8th of August.
All right. Thanks. Very cool.
I have two real quick things. One, I'd like to congratulate the golf, girls' golf team for an absolutely wonderful start to the season. And some of us might remember the coach, Greg Harris, or Greg Harris Jr., his son. It's really a great way to start it out. They've won a tournament, and they've been doing very well. I am horrible at golf, so I'm very impressed. Second of all, real quick, is there's been a lot of discussion around why is my electric bill higher than it was? I'm using NOPEC, which is Northeast Ohio Energy Council. They have published a press release, which I believe you're going to put on the website for us to know. Effective on the 24th yesterday, there's nearly 550,000 electricity customers across Ohio, because NOPEC has a pretty good footprint. They'll soon start saving money on their electric bills, because NOPEC took some proactive steps to save its electric customers and their electric bills for the remainder of this year and into the spring of 2023. They work with the PUCO. You don't have to take any action. They're going to revert back to the lower rate. We all know this is inflation everywhere. So it's worked with the PUCO. You don't have to do anything. You'll not be charged any fee. They're going to transfer you to the lower rate. NOPEC will immediately notify the electric utilities to return to its standard program price accounts. And depending on your meter date, it may take a month or two months. The other thing is every household that signed up through NOPEC will receive a mail, not email, but I believe physical mail, that explains everything that's happening, and you don't have to take any action. Before, you had to take action. They went to the PUCO and said, "Can't we just do this for everybody? That way, everybody gets back to a lower price." I will keep you posted on any changes that come with that. The mayor is on the NOPEC board. I'm on the NOPEC Inc. board, which is like, I guess, the mothership. So but this will be, you'll get it in the mail, and it'll also be, the press release will be on the web. Thank you, though, for your concern. I know Jeff and I have talked several times about it. So it's been a concern. You know, it gets real tough to try and afford. Right now, it's air conditioning. In the winter, well, maybe it'll still be air conditioning. But in the winter, it will be heating up the house and your electricity, depending on how your house is, you know, taking care of, whether it's electric or gas. You're going to be impacted. And then you go out and you try and buy food. So, or gas for those cars that we can order. Thank you.
Any other new business? One last thing for me. I'd like to thank Mayor Domsalsky for joining us this evening. She wanted to come and see how our process works. So I guess I owe you one now. I got to come back and see one of yours with you.
I'll be coming.
But thank you for coming. All right, I have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.